Good evening, and thank you for coming to tonight's December 11th, 2018 Southbridge School Committee meeting. We don't have our normal person to do roll call, so I will proceed with the roll call. Ms. Duval?
President.
Ms. Shea?
President.
Ms. Palaquin?
President.
Mr. Thelma? Mr. Page? Mr. Bishop? Ms. Ryan? Present. Four present, three not. Quorum is established. Before we go to the Pledge of Allegiance, I would entertain a motion, since we do not have a recording secretary tonight, to appoint somebody to be recording secretary.
I would like to nominate Martina Shea.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion? Can we just vote by unanimous consent? Okay. Okay. We will now do the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will now move on to Agenda Item Number Four, Citizen Input. Is there anybody here tonight who would like to address the school committee on a matter that is not on the agenda? I repeat, is there anybody here tonight who would like to address the school committee on a matter that's not on the agenda tonight? Seeing now, we will move on. We will now move on to Agenda Item Number Five, School Culture and Climate. I will move to Ms. Shea, because this was her discussion. I'll have her start off.
It's a difficult topic. We've had complaints from parents, from teachers. I've read things on the local blogs about issues in the, both the elementary, the middle, and the high school, saying that people are feeling threatened, people are being bullied. I know that the number-one issue for Dr. Vallard this year has been climate and culture, but it just seems that it's something that the community should be addressing, that the school committee should be addressing. We are, we have no power. As you'll notice, Dr. Vallard is not with us tonight, but we have checked with the Attorney General, we checked with the town manager. The meeting is legal, but since we have no power, all this is really going to be is a forum to see if we can come up with some, some direction to go, some solutions. If you saw my thing on Focus on Southbridge, it would be, do we have something positive we can do to help our kids, to help our teachers, to help our community? Because if we don't get our hands around this issue, it's going to, it's going to be the kind of an issue that will stay with us for years and hurt the reputation of Southbridge, hurt the reputation of our pioneers, and that is a place we do not want to go. I was just talking to one of my friends today. Her grandson goes to Southbridge High School. He's in AP courses, and she said she read one of his essays, he's a senior, and she said, "I couldn't have done that when I was in college." So we know that our kids at the top levels are getting a first-class education. We want to be sure that all of our students feel safe, all of our students are encouraged to grow, all of our teachers are working with us, and that the administration is working to help teachers be the best they can be, to take care of the students who need extra help, and to identify children who are truly a problem and deal with them, not with everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shea. Before we move on to getting comments from the public, because that's what I really think this is going to be, is getting comments from the public about what's going on and what the solutions may be. I also want to say how important of an issue this is for all of us up here. It's been on the top of my radar for a very long time. I've had a lot of conversations, I had multiple this morning before I went to work about it. So, thank you all for coming. This is the most attended school committee meeting I've seen since I've lived in Southbridge, and it's nice to see parents are out here and concerned, teachers are here and concerned. And with that, we will move on to comments and statements from the public.
Maybe I, could I suggest that the woman from the hospital?
Of course. Yes. Yeah. Anybody can come up to the podium and...
Do you need the name and address?
Just make sure you state your name and your address for the record.
Good evening. This is, my name's Heather Marinelli. I reside at 9 Henry Street in Southbridge. My daughter attends West Street School. From the beginning of the year, my daughter's been having issues in the classroom. She's a straight-A student.
Could you talk to the mic more? Sorry. The mic's a little...
Is this better?
Yes, thank you.
You can move it closer to your microphone.
Is this any better?
Yes.
Okay. So my daughter is a fifth-grade student at West Street School. She's a straight-A student. She's doing well. However, her classroom is not an educational environment. There are students in our class that have behavioral issues, and I understand it's an inclusion classroom, and I think everybody has a right to an education, including my daughter. And if she's not able to get a proper education because of the behavioral issues in the classroom, then I know that there's other students in the classroom that's not achieving the, you know, their educational potential. As part of the solution to this, I think the more i's in the classroom to help the teacher, the better. I did my query check. I got it cleared. I wanted to volunteer. I was denied access into the classroom. I'll let you think about that for a second. Got my query check, had everything dotted, all my i's crossed, all my t's, and was not granted to be able to be volunteer into the classroom. I was stopped by the principal. According to her, it's because, I got a couple of different scenarios, but according to her latest thing, she told me it's because the, what do you call that? The, their education plan has changed. And because they're implementing new information, new, new work for the children, that it's going to be a distraction to have a parent come into the classroom and assist the teacher. Which, to me, if you're having new material handed out, wouldn't it be more of an asset to have an extra pair of hands helping these children out? That's just one of my suggestions that I have. You know, there should be more one-on-ones. If there is that much of a behavioral issue in a classroom with a child, you know, even if it's a two-on-one, what, you know, or maybe that child should be actually looked at to be moved to a school that's more conducive to what his personal needs are. I know it's not, this is not just in my daughter's classroom, this is throughout a lot of classrooms at West Street. I don't know what else to say. But if it's, if it's going to be like this next year, I guarantee you, my child will not be attending. My daughter was homeschooled for the past four years, and once again, I tried to put her into the Southbridge Public Schools system to see what would happen. I have three older children that went through the Southbridge Public Schools for a few years. I ended up taking them out, putting them in private school for a few years, brought them back in when the Southbridge Junior/Senior High School was first built, giving it a chance. I won't rehash what that horrible year was entailed for all three of my children, but after that, I decided to switch over to Quabog for those, for the remaining years for their schooling. I am trying to give Southbridge Public Schools a chance, but every time I, you know, try to bring my children back into the school system, I'm completely let down by the lack of care. It's not so much the teachers, because I know the teachers care about their students. I really feel that there's no backing for the teachers. They can't discipline the children, and they're not getting any support from the administration. So it's just this wonderful horrible loop. Where do you go? That's all I have to say tonight. I, I, I don't know where else to go, where else to turn, and I know I'm not the only parent out there that feels the same way.
Your story is like so many others I have personally heard about, and I know the struggle you're going through, and I thank you for coming to us tonight and letting us know this. I know as somebody who's volunteered in the schools before, and I have read students before, and that seems quite bizarre that they wouldn't let a parent be able to be a part of the classroom.
I'm not the only parent that has wanted to volunteer at West Street School and has been denied access.
That's, that's astonishing. I'm gonna, I'm gonna look into that, because that's, that's definitely a change of practice from what we've seen.
I thought there was an open-door policy with the schools.
I thought so too.
That's what I thought.
I thought so too. Are there any other people who would like to?
Martina? No, I just wanted to ask if there were other parents. Did they offer you a different position to help, like help in the gym or the art room?
Nope. The only position that she said that I can possibly do is at the time with the Christmas, with the little store thingy that they have for their kids that can go in. But again, that does not help the classroom situation.
No.
That, that is like external. That's not what's going on and where it's needed.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Is there anybody else who would like to come in front of the school committee tonight and say something? Yes. Please, just for the record, state your name and your address.
My name is Elba. And I'm gonna be nervous, that's for sure. I'm gonna say that.
Can you just put the mic a little more closer? Sorry. It's a bad mic. Yeah.
Yeah. All right. So I'm gonna be a little bit nervous, but this is an issue that actually needs to be spoken about. Like her, I'm a parent of three little girls, and have gone through the whole bullying experience with them. You know, seeing your child get her coming home, not wanting to go back to school, it's not something as a parent that you want. Going to work and feeling comfortable, and then all of a sudden, you can't feel comfortable anymore, because you don't know what's happening at school. I think that they should implement more, I don't know, like half-hour meetings with counselors for these problem child. I, I don't want to call them problem kids at all, but it is a problem to the other students that are trying to do good. There's nothing that comes to, like she says, a one-on-one with them. They don't, I don't feel like they have a platform on how to deal with these children that are taken away from the kids that actually want to learn. My kids are honor roll students. My oldest came home, well, they called me from school saying that she was really sick. She didn't want to go to school. I mean, she was horrified. I came to find out the parent of the other child never knew that he was actually doing these things, like calling her names and putting my daughter down. And I found out because I know it might seem harsh, but three months after, you know, going into that, I actually spoke to the parent of the child, never knew anything. And I had gone to the school, and I had called multiple times, I addressed the issue, and they were taking care of it, taking care of it, taking care of it, and nothing was actually being done, because the parent never knew. If my child is doing well, I want to know about it. If my child is doing the bullying, I want to be able to rectify the issue. Some parents don't know that their kids are doing that. Other parents think that, or they know that these kids are the issue, but they have no idea on how to deal with them. I just, I believe that there should be more, like a counselor, maybe once a month, to just meet up with these kids and take half hour away from their breaks, maybe, so that it can feel like a punishment to them, as well as a, maybe like, it becomes an opening, like they can speak to somebody, because there could be an underlying issue that we don't know about. You know, maybe they have problems at home, they want to speak to an adult, and they So I came up with a group, it's called Reforming Our Youth, it's fairly new, and what my hopes for this group is to have a platform on how to deal with these things and to help the schools, like to send the kids over to, for instance, you know, Harrington, where they have these groups for bullying, as opposed to just punishing these kids, because that's another issue that they have. They get punished, and they feel out of everything, and they feel like they're doing really, really bad, as opposed to just trying to guide them.
Yeah.
That's all I can say. I just, I wish there was something else that we could do for the kids that are actually wanting to go to school and learn. This is preventing them from doing that.
Thank you so much.
Excuse me. You're from the group Reforming Our Youth?
I'm sorry?
You said you're reforming a group, you, I mean, you know, are you?
Well, yes, it's Reforming Our Youth. And what we're trying to do is come up with solutions and build groups to have a way of knowing what this kid needs, how to help these kids, and then send them to that particular person that knows how to deal with these type of issues. That I believe that if they get taken to schools, it actually will help the teachers and the families, because sometimes the families know that the kid is doing the bullying, but don't know how to handle these kids. So, you know, it's just, it's, it's not fair for the child, and it's not fair for the family. So my idea of the group is, I really don't know how to explain it right now. It's just trying to make a platform for, for these kids.
Are your children senior, senior school or middle school?
My kids, one is nine, the other one is seven, and the other one is three. But my nine and my seven-year-old had had incidents where they'd been bullied and did not want to go back to school, and I would call multiple times to the school or go to the school, and still the same issue time and time again. This year, last week, same thing. I guess the school is coming up with a way of letting our kids know what they should do, where it's like you turn around and tell the bully to stop. I don't like that, stop, I don't like that. What is that gonna do? These kids should be able to get punished in a way that they can learn how to, how to, it's, I guess I want to say like stop doing that, but also not be excluded. Because when you exclude a kid, actually, they want to reveal after even worse, like just want to act up, as opposed to helping others. So I, I believe like if schools come up with mini projects where they can set up in groups of people that are not friends, but they're bullying whoever else, they'll actually interact more and better with each other. It'll open doors, as opposed to making enemies. You know, little things like that. I believe the schools should come up with plans.
Hopefully, we do.
Yeah, hopefully, we do. Well, thank you for doing this.
Could I have your name again, please?
I'm sorry?
Your name again.
Elba, E-L-B-A.
And last name?
Molina. M-O-L-I-N-A.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else who would like to address the school committee tonight on school climate and culture? Just again, for the record, please state your name and your address, if you live in town, or if you work in town, your group you're affiliated with.
My name is Kelsey Timmons. I work at Harrington Hospital. I am part of the self-wellness program over there. We're located on 79 Sale Street. Our mission right now is to try to end the bullying problem that Southbridge schools are facing. The reason I'm here tonight is I wanted to let the public know that we provide a service for anti-bullying prevention in the community, and we would like to offer our services to the school. All of our services are free. You can set up office visits with us, you could call us. We do offer school events. It's usually held at lunchtime. We set up tables with all of our brochures and everything, and the students can come up, take what they need, feel less, no judgment, of course. We have Facebook pages where we update daily with things that can try to prevent the spread of more bullying, should I say.
Thank you so much. I had previously been involved with the self-wellness program. I believe it was Lisa who was running it? Was it Lea? She's great. I was involved when I was, when I was actually a minor with the self-wellness program, providing LGBT supports. So I really think it's a great program, and I really hope that the public takes more advantage of it.
Thank you. That's what our goal is. We're trying to get more outreach with the, with the Southbridge community especially.
Ms. Palaquin?
Could you tell us your phone number?
Of course. I have these brochures, if anyone liked one. I do have business cards, but our main phone number is 508-764-2441, and that will lead you to Sue Fafford. She is the director of the program.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Thank you so very much. Is there anybody else here tonight who would like to address the school committee on school climate and culture? Yes, please.
My name's Nicole Duffy.
You gotta talk more into the mic, I apologize.
I'm sorry. Better. My name's Nicole Duffy. I'm an active member of this community. I was born and raised here. My background is in child advocacy with the CASA program as a court-appointed special advocate, and I'm also a board member. And I'm here because I wanted to share a little bit of a story.
A little bit closer, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Can you hear me?
Yeah, no, I can hear you.
Is that better?
Yeah, better.
Sorry about that. I wanted to share a little story. Over the weekend, I, I have a 50-year-old son, and picked up his friend, just, you know, for the weekend, and just in the car ride, in 15 minutes, he, by the way, he goes to Southbridge High School. He's a freshman. And we all know how non-communicative, you know, teen boys are. So this kind of surprised me, that he just completely opened up and talked about how in school, how it was, you know, how a chair and then a desk was thrown at one of the teachers. And he's like, "I don't know how anyone could do that." He's like, "That's like a little lady." And he's like, he was just very, you know, affected by that. And I had asked him, I'm like, "Wow, when did that happen?" And he's like, "Well, which time?" So that's, you know, very concerning with that. And, you know, we talked a little bit more, and I was just kind of asking like, you know, what do you, so what do you think? You know, what would help? You know, I just wanted to kind of get his perspective. And he had said, I mean, he's like, well, he's like, honestly, he's like, "I know a lot of those people don't have father figures, and there's not a lot of men in the school." And he's like, "I think if we saw a lot of men there, like walk in the halls," he's like, "I know I'd feel safer." And it just kind of dawned on me, you know, maybe, maybe we could come together as a community a little bit better with that. I know a lot of parents volunteer in schools, as they are, and I'm just wondering, you know, put a suggestion out there, maybe we can get some male volunteers primarily, if nothing else, like as hall monitors, or just to be a physical presence, is what I got from him. And, you know, I just wanted to put that suggestion out there. You know, I mean, even myself, even off the top of my head, I know two gentlemen who had just offered, "Hey, I'd volunteer." You know, and I'm sure, that's just me, I can't imagine how many others, you know? So I just wanted to put that suggestion out there and share that story.
Thank you, Ms. Duffy. Can you just state your address for the record?
657 Worcester Street.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other? Is there anybody else in the audience tonight who would like to address the Southbridge School Committee? Moving, we will move on to board members then. Are there any other board members who would like to say anything to this effect or talk about this issue further? Ms. Palaquin?
I just want to thank you for going forward with having a meeting tonight. I was very disappointed that the receiver decided to cancel our meeting unilaterally with no discussion. I mean, I've gotten phone calls over the last month, and I know you have as well, and I think it's very irresponsible to try to hide it under the rug. We should definitely be having a forum for parents and teachers to let us know what's going on. So I thank everybody who came here tonight. I really appreciate you. I know public speaking is difficult for some people, so I just, I appreciate for everybody who was brave enough to come forward and tell us what was going on with them. I know it can be hard. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Palaquin. Ms. Duval?
Just, coming up with what you're saying, I'm impressed how many people are here tonight on a short notice about this, this situation. We don't get that many in a regular school committee meeting, and I think this is something that's needed to be, have the public tell us what they think they're, they're doing. Thank you for coming.
Ms. Shea?
I know that the school committee had, uh, school committee, the school department, the administration, has a new program, and as far as I can understand, that when a child is accosted by a bully, they're supposed to say, "Stop. I don't like this behavior." If that doesn't stop it, they're supposed to walk away, and if that doesn't work, then they're supposed to tell an adult. I just see that in so many of these things I'm hearing, we've gone beyond that, that the child themselves has tried to deal with it, their teachers have tried to deal with it, their parents are working to deal with it. I think we need something stronger. You know, "stop" works wonderfully with just the goofy kid who's carrying on. We all know, we all know that kid, and the second you tell him to stop, he stops, she stops. But when you have children who are continuously, you know, doing, doing bullying and actually getting to the point of physical violence, that's where I think the line is drawn. And we're hearing about those things, and I want to, I want to stay on top of this.
Ms. Ryan, we have someone who's raised their hand in the back.
Yes, please, yes, please come up to the microphone. While we're waiting for her to come up, I'd also like to say, it's really, we as a school board are listening to you. We really care about what's going on in our community. It's why we have given ourselves and our time to serve this community. Whatever frustrations you have, please let us know. We need to be in the know, because unfortunately, the administration has not been too transparent. I have worked diligently, I have met with him, Dr. Vallard, monthly to discuss issues within the school district, and I am not at all pleased with the lack of transparency from the school department. I've tried really hard to try to make this easy, to try to work closely with the state, and unfortunately, and it hurts me to say this, because this is not something I wanted to say, I am not feeling that the school department, the receiver, and the state is acting in good faith and transparency with the public. And that hurts me to say, because I campaigned when I ran for this seat to be a partner with the state and work closely to fix the Southbridge Public Schools. And I want to still do that, but unfortunately, I don't think the state is willing to work as, with, as, with the school committee as a partner to do that. And that's why I pushed with help of my board members here tonight for this meeting, back against some great resistance from the school department. So I want to thank the board members for sending me this petition, for really working with me. I want to thank the AG's office for working with me, and I want to thank the town manager for his time for working with me. And we'll now turn back to Ms. Molina.
So I did forget to mention, though, and I, and thank you, yes, thank you for doing this, because we do need to get heard, not only as parents, as a community. These are our future, obviously, and that's why we need to stop it somehow now, because this has been ongoing for years. And it seems like as the years go by, it gets worse and worse and worse. And that, "Stop. I don't like this," it does not stop. A child would plan to hurt somebody, and so it literally, at this point, has to take for the child to become violent, for something to actually get done, some kind of action. I do not blame the schools at all. I blame the way that they have to work around everything, and I, they have to literally walk on eggshells. And us as parents, we do get upset, because we hand our kids over to these people that are supposed to be watching our kids, but they only can do so much. I mean, we need to, and that's, that's why I said there needs to be more implemented in order for them to work with, and these kids that are actually acting in that way need to be punished in some way, before it gets tough, because we'll tougher. Then we'll see them on the streets, doing whatever they want, and acting worse, but when we are able to stop it, we don't even do that, because we... But when we are able to stop it, we don't even do that because we actually let them do whatever they want. And we don't, we're not stronger towards them. We don't support our teachers and the schools in order for them to do something in regards to that, so that they can protect the ones that are really doing well. It interrupts the whole class. It interrupts, it takes away from the teachers being able to perform at their best. And this is why somebody, whoever has power, needs to figure something else, something that can just punish these kids and stop that. Thank you.
Is there anybody else who would like to address the committee? Is there any, Ms. Duval?
Yeah. Again, I'll reiterate, this is, with this group that's here today is telling us that there is a definite problem and we should work on it. And the sto, the receiver should be working on this problem also.
Thank you. Ms. Pellican?
I'd just like to point out that in addition to us having no power, that there's a lot of reasons why we don't have the resources we need. We are not being supported as I believe we should be from our town council. The state aid funding formula for schools hasn't been recalculated since 1993, when I was in the fourth grade. And the costs for running a school district have changed significantly since the last time they looked at how much money the state gives each city in town to run the school district. And we are on the bottom of that funding barrel. Our school district is one of the most under-resourced school districts in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And it's horrifically unfair that children who are our most vulnerable members of society are getting the bare minimum from the systems and structures that are supposed to be taking care of them.
That was very profound. Thank you, Ms. Pellican. I wholeheartedly agree with that. If there is no one else who would like to address this, oh, oh, I'm so sorry, Mr. Merch, I did not see you there. My apologies.
It's all right. My name is Andrew Merch. I live in 101 High Street on second floor apartment. I've been sitting there listening and I, I used to work with Worcester Community Action Council's Head Start and Early Head Start Program, which has a lot of parental involvement in order to get the program running. So it's a different dynamic than a public school system. But we also had school meetings for the different centers that they had locations at, where parents could come in and vocalize concerns or they had, or ask questions, pretty much just a general forum. And they would do that every month to, to hear from the parents and what they need. And this is that avenue to get that kind of a message from the parents. And I feel that there needs to be a way for us to get more parental involvement through, directly through the school as well. If, and unfortunately, with where the school committee is kind of put into, it's really hard to try to push for anything. But this is kind of more towards everybody else. If you've got friends that are parents, because my son goes to West Street and he's had issues where I had to go to the school to press the issue when my son was being bullied, they said they addressed the issue. And then my son comes home two days later, is being bullied by the same kid. And I have to go to the school and force them pretty much by saying, there's no reason I'm going to be up here every day until this is, is resolved. Then they figured out a way to resolve the issue. Other parents need to be just actively engaged. And if you can get friends to come out here if they've got complaints and get them to the school committee, especially if the receiver is here, because unfortunately, he did not come to the meeting tonight. Next, the next meeting that we have where the receiver is here, we need the same amount of parents out here, if not more, to express these concerns so that he can hear them as well, because this is our education system, this is our, these are our kids that are in the schools, and there's no reason why we can't have our voice heard. So I, I know I'm going to be talking to as many parents as I can that I communicate with to get more involved with this, but this, we need to try to push as parents to get more parents out here to press our concerns to the committee and to the receiver. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Merch. Before you leave. Ms. Pellican?
I, I'd just like to point out that the next school committee meeting in January is scheduled to be a joint meeting of the school committee and the town council. And the town council votes to set the local expenditure towards the school budget every year. So it would be a good meeting for you to come and address both boards. Do you, do you know the date for that meeting yet? Has it been set?
I can look at my email real quick.
We'll get that date to you before you leave.
Tonight, yes. Is there anybody else who would like to address the school committee meeting? No? Okay. We'll move on to new business. Is there any other new business the board would like to bring up for the next meeting? Seeing none. Is there any old business the body would like to bring up for the meeting tonight? Seeing none, we will now move on to chairwoman announcements. I don't want to go on a rant, but I feel I may. This meeting was a real hard slog, I think, real hard slog to get together. Again, I want to thank Ms. Shea for leading this and other members for signing on, for getting this meeting. Receiver truly believes he has all the powers of this school committee. One of the past practices of this body has been to vote, to put the meeting dates, and to vote leadership. It's one of the few powers we've had. And this receiver believes that he can take that power away from us. I strongly disagree with that. It's why I contacted the AG's office. They would not give an official ruling. And, but the one comment that was made to me directly was precedent would matter. The precedent has been we set our meetings, we control this committee. He may have our powers, but he does not control us as a body. And I want to be clear, as long as this body exists, we will fight for every student, for every parent, and for every teacher in this community. Beyond that, I really, really want to have more meetings where parents come out, make their voices heard. Because unfortunately, the receiver is not going to listen to us. But you as parents and as teachers and as children have far more power than any of us do up here to make impactful change. And I do encourage all of you to come to a meeting when the receiver is here. Because without you, this process is not going to go very far. Beyond that, we will now move on to number four. Ms. Duval, is there anything you'd like to bring up tonight?
I'd like to make a comment on what you just made. This, this district has been lacking, let's put it this way, with many, many different changeovers and everything else that, since I've been on here and everything. And believe it or not, we've had three receivers also in three years. Is that good, steady, you know, leadership? I don't think so. We're not getting the leadership we need. So that's my opinion. I also want to wish everybody here a Merry Christmas and a blessed and happy New Year and make it prosperous and hopefully we'll come up with some solutions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Duval. Ms. Shea?
Just keep up the good work. They are our kids. This is our town. We pay the taxes. That's what it boils down to. We control the money. Our town council controls the money. And sometimes that's all the state listens to. And have a nice Christmas.
Ms. Pellican?
I would just like to point out that our municipal elections are in June. All you need to do to run for office in Southbridge is be registered to vote here. I would encourage you to look at who's running and whether they prioritize education, particularly funding equitable education. And the political process doesn't change unless people who utilize services get together and ask for change. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Pellican. So the next scheduled school committee meeting is January 8th. I assume that's going to be the date, but I have not finalized those details with Dr. Valar. Hopefully he will work with me to finalize those details and we'll have that joint meeting. If not, that will be the next regularly, regularly scheduled meeting. And if we have no other business, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor? All those opposed? All those abstaining? Motion was?
I'm sorry.
Oh, how do you vote, Ms. Shea? Affirmative?
Yes.
Okay. It was unanimous, this meeting is now adjourned.
Thank you.